Very, very warm welcome to this special meeting of Falkirk Council held today, Monday, the twentieth of December. In accordance with section forty-three of the Local Government in Scotland Act two thousand and three, I have directed that this meeting will be conducted in such a manner as to allow remote attendance by elected members. In accordance with section fifty of the Local Government Scotland Act nineteen seventy-three, the public are excluded from this meeting, as it is likely that if members of the public were present, there would be a real and substantial risk of health due to infection or contamination with coronavirus. The meeting will be live streamed via the council website. I'm going to hand you over now to Mr Moody for the sedating. Thank you, Mr Moody.
Thank you, Provost. Provost be kind of now.
Present.
Deputy Provost Ritchie.
Present.
Counselor H.
I think he's trying, he's trying to go online, but he says struggling a bit.
I believe there may be an apology from Counsel Alexander.
That's correct.
If you turn to the centre. Counsel Alex, Counsel Balfour, I beg your pardon.
Present.
And so good.
Present.
And so does it.
Present.
And so Black.
Present.
And so Blackwood.
Present.
And so Vice.
Present.
And so Coleman.
Present.
And so Colley.
Present.
And so Coombs.
Present.
And so Slade.
Present.
And so Garner.
Yeah.
And so Goldie. And so Grant.
Present.
And so Harris.
Present.
And so Hughes.
Present.
And so Kerr.
Yeah.
And so McHugh.
Present.
And so McClocky.
Here.
And so Miku Tom.
Present.
And so Monroe.
Present.
And so Macta.
And sure.
And so Nico.
Apologies.
And so Nimble.
Present.
And so Patrick.
Present.
And so Russell.
Present.
And Counsel Spears.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Moody. That takes us to declaration of interest. And just for clarity, I'll read it out. Members should declare any financial and non-financial interest they have in any item of business at the meeting, identifying the relevant agenda item and the nature of the interest. Have any declaration of interest to this item? None recorded. That's fine. Thank you. That takes us to item three on your agenda papers this afternoon. It's Falkirk and Grangemouth Investment Zone. It's pages two to fourteen on your agenda papers, and Mr Laurie and Mr Duff will summarise the report and will be available for questions during the date. Thank you, Mr Laurie. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Provost, and good afternoon to all. And we've reached a very significant point in relation to the Falkirk and Grangemouth Investment Zone proposal as we seek to move to sign off the heads of terms for the deal. And of course, city deals and growth deals have been taken forward across the length and breadth of the UK with their focus on economic growth and new investment and new jobs and innovation and regeneration and inclusivity, training and skills, and increasingly about our route to net zero. And the proposed Falkirk deal includes all of these things. Indeed, it is seeking to achieve two thousand new jobs and eight hundred and eighty million of gross value added over the next ten years. But what is unique about the Falkirk deal is that we have pursued ours independently, not in partnership with other councils, as we have seen elsewhere, but in partnership with business, as well as with a range of other agencies, with a real focus on Scotland's key industrial powerhouse at Grangemouth, in order to realise the ambitions and the aspirations we have for this area, its economy and our communities, to build confidence for the future and to act as a platform for further projects, further partnership and further investment. The Falkirk Economic Partnership, business-led, has led this process. UK and Scottish governments have been involved in and seen the strengths of that partnership, and have now come forward with an offer to align with the significant investments being made by the private sector locally. The primary objective today, Provost, is to seek council's agreement to sign off the heads of terms with UK Scottish government for the delivery of the ninety million pounds Falkirk and Grangemouth Investment Zone, as set out in the report. And with your agreement, I'll pass over to Douglas Duff to take us through the details of the report.
Thank you, Mr Duff.
Thanks, Provost. And my apologies in having to bring elected members out in the week before Christmas, but as they'll no doubt understand, the time scales for this haven't been governed by ourselves, but are dependent on support from UK and Scottish government, who have now reached the point where they are agreeable to signing off on this proposal. And as Kenneth has explained, this is an important step forward for the area, as a significant prospect of investment through this deal itself, but also the platform that it gives to further investment and stimulation of the area's economy that we hope to come. And therefore, we're asking that the council would note the progress of the work that's taking place to date, that agrees to enter into an agreement with the UK and Scottish governments for delivery of ninety million pounds' worth of investment in the Falkirk-Grangemouth Investment Zone initiative. And there was a summary contained within the document and appended in it. Appendix one is the terms of the heads of terms agreement itself. We're also asking to note the allocation of previously committed funds, the forty-five million allocated to the council's headquarters and that centre project as a match funded contribution to the initiative, and also that we proceed with the development of business cases that will allow the investments to get underway and be realised. This work goes back to the work that was undertaken to prepare an economic strategy in twenty fifteen. That had been put together as a response to the prices that had emerged in Grangemouth in twenty thirteen, when there was the prospect of closure of the chemicals works at that site. And it was recognised at that point that we needed a new economic strategy to take the area forward. And in the course of preparing that strategy, growth, investment and inclusion, we highlighted the prospect of creating an investment zone, targeting the new investments that could come forward around Grangemouth as a platform to the area's economic growth. And so since that point, we've been developing the relations with UK and Scottish government to prepare the investment zone and draw down funds from city and growth deals. As Kenneth has said, there are a number of around the country. And it also aligns very closely with our own work that's been taking place through the Falkirk Tax Increment Financing Initiative and the recent attraction of levelling up funds, and therefore is a combined package of investment in infrastructure that will help the area to move forward, but also aligns with, we estimate, over a billion pounds' worth of investment that has come forward, and some already at Grangemouth and others poised to take place at Grangemouth that will help to transform its fortunes. The proposals in the investment zone will help to stimulate the area's economy, but they'll also play an important part in addressing the climate emergency that the council has declared its commitment towards. And a number of the projects contained in the package demonstrate how we intend to help the area move towards net zero. The package has been developed through a number of years and engagement with a broad range of stakeholders. We did give an early summary of that work in twenty seventeen, where we agreed work on a strategic outline case for the whole package, and then a subsequent proposal in October twenty nineteen, where we submitted a bid for two hundred and thirty-five million pounds' worth of support to deliver the growth deal programme. Since then, we've been liaising with UK and Scottish governments to refine their allocation of funds towards that package and the projects that they are willing to see supported within that scheme. And last year, they announced ninety million pounds' worth of funds as contributory to the delivery of that package. That comes in the form of forty million from UK government, forty million from Scottish government, and an additional allocation of ten million to help promote a greener Grangemouth, coming from the Scottish government. Programme is matched with contracts from the council, so the forty-five million of capital funds that the council has earmarked to the HQ and that centre project are earmarked as match funding to this package, as well as around six million coming from Scottish canals towards its delivery. And therefore, in sum, around a hundred and forty million being invested in the area through the scheme, and we're asking for approval to sign off the heads of terms that will allow further work to take place to enable that to proceed. The report demonstrates the range of challenges that that package is intended to address, issues with the competitiveness of our economy currently, issues with skills, with unemployment, and with the regeneration needs of our town centres. It does highlight the opportunities to move forward. The industry is investing, it is changing, it sees new propositions and the potential that they can come forward at Grangemouth, and real opportunities to grow in some of the transition that's taking place in the area, particularly for example in the tourism sector. The package does have a new focus in merging over the course of this work on net zero. It highlights that around four million tonnes of carbon are emitted from Grangemouth annually. It's Scotland's largest single concentration of emissions, around ten percent in total. And the measures it contains point towards means by which some of that, those carbon emissions can be mitigated. So there's a summary of each of the projects contained in the document and more details in the appendix, that they relate to two main themes, one about innovative industry and the second about creating great places. The innovative industry package involves a carbon dioxide utilisation centre, so this is about capturing carbon emitted from plants at Grangemouth and using it on-site to create new products and using new industrial processes that can bring these forward. There's already some examples of that, and the intention is to promote more. There's a bioeconomy accelerator project, which will do further works of that type to introduce reuse of vegetable materials and so on, that can help to create biofuels, as an example, and can build on the experience we've seen with the likes of Celtic Renewables down in Grangemouth, who are putting in place a demonstrator for that type of activity. So therefore, more scope of that and an integrated facility that will cover carbon capture and that bioeconomy accelerator. We want a public transport net zero technology cluster that will build in the expertise of Alexander Dennis in promoting the use of electric and hydrogen vehicles, and increased use of other technologies that will reduce carbon emissions from public transport. We want to create a number of strategic innovation sites where these new activities can be located, but also where inward investment can be attracted alongside to create new products, new services that will support the transition of the economy in those areas. And a new innovation skills transition centre that Forth Valley College will take forward to help prepare our young people to enter into these new job opportunities, and also to help some existing workforces to transition into these new industries. And they have set up quite innovative connections with universities that will allow people to enter straight from school, go through apprenticeship programmes, come out with a degree through graduate or indeed postgraduate qualifications. Second programme's about creating great places, and that reinforces the quality of place that we have in our existing communities at Falkirk and Grangemouth to reinforce and help transform them further. And first up there is to create a new sustainable transport hub around Falkirk and Grahamstone, a new Falkirk central, that will be the multimodal connection to different parts of our area and across the region, and it will create a green corridor down to Grangemouth for pedestrians and cyclists to access. A new canal centre based at Lock sixteen will build on the work we've been doing with Scottish canals to refurbish the former Bars building. It will create a headquarters for Scottish canals. They're moving their headquarters from Glasgow out to Falkirk, which is a significant investment in itself, but they'll also have facilities there for business, for communities, for employment and training, and for culture. And so a real opportunity to create a hub at that location. A national outdoor art park along the route of the canal that will build on the experience so far with the kelpies and the wheel and create more art features that will help to regenerate the waterfront. And finally, the Falkirk Art Centre, where we're seeking six million of contributions towards that project, with a business case that needs to be put together in order to finalise the approach to that scheme and allow those funds to be drawn down. The greener Grangemouth programme I mentioned is to help the town to connect with industry and the community in its journey to net zero. So a significant programme that will help improve access to cheaper energy, to regenerate the town centre, to promote active travel measures across the area, to blend with the range of investment that industry has underway. I should say that a third investment zones stream that was mapped out at the time of our submission in twenty nineteen, related to the national economic infrastructure, the infrastructure that would serve the port and the chemicals complex and make the location most competitive. And that work stream has been set to one side. We are progressing with it through the Grangemouth Future Industry Board, and we're having constructive dialogue with different departments across government about how those projects can come forward. Alongside definition of these projects through the detailed business cases that we now have to put under way, we'll need a robust programme of governance, of monitoring and evaluation over the programme, so that we can evidence good value for money and expenditure of these public funds. We're creating an Invest Falkirk team that will be the project management office to carry forward each of the projects, and they will be responsible for making sure there is delivery and also monitoring against the outcomes that we've set. And we anticipate around two thousand jobs being created through this programme, and over eight hundred million of gross value added, increased productivity at the Grangemouth locations and elsewhere in our economy. And all of that helping to boost the area's economy and to help in its transition to net zero. There's more consultation work to take place, particularly with the various stakeholders who've been progressing these projects, and also with the community and the Grangemouth community in particular, will need to have a robust process to start discussions about what that programme should look like and how it can help move forward. The financial and other implications are set out in the report. We highlight, as I say, the funds coming from UK and Scottish government, and that will be phased over ten years. Capital funds principally, there is a sum of two million available as revenue, but it's principally capital funds that will come over that ten-year period. And it does note the match funding contribution coming from the council, the forty-five million that it has in its budget for the HQ and that centre is earmarked as match funding to the programme, and also the six million from Scottish canals. There is also some funds that we have in our revenue budget for the economic recovery, which we'll use to support the development of detailed business cases to allow this to move forward. I've mentioned the Invest Falkirk team, that will be the key to delivering these projects, and we're working on a business case to populate that team, bring together the skills that will be necessary to deliver. We also wrote the sustainability benefits, I've mentioned the net zero contributions that can come forward here, and that concept of a just transition, which reflects work taking place at national and in fact global level, we believe that we can be an early demonstrator of how that journey can proceed. So inclusions, Provost, we're at an important stage, as Kenneth has noted, in being able to sign off on these heads of terms to allow this package to move forward, to prepare detailed business cases for the delivery of the various projects. That will see significant new assets brought to our area, the centres of excellence in carbon capture utilisation, bioeconomy, canals and public transport, innovation sites to attract inward investment, Falkirk central facility at the town centre, a regionally significant art centre, national outdoor art park, and a just transition plan for Grangemouth, which really is significant for the town and for the nation. So we're hopeful that we can move this forward with full engagement of our partners and the community, and see the projects delivered successfully over the next ten years. Happy to take any questions, Provost.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Duff. We're going to go straight to the leader of the council, Counsel Michael John.
Thank you, Provost. I would just first like to thank Douglas and his team who have led on this and have worked tirelessly in developing the investment zone and the growth deal to get us to the significant milestone over the last four years. And to everyone who has pulled out all the stops over the last few weeks to make this happen, I include the Scottish and UK civil servants in this, as I know, to get it finalised. It's not been without its challenges, but we've got there, and I think that's the most important. I would like to thank everyone involved in our economic partnership for their support, policy, practical and financial contributions. As without the potential for the reach and impact of the growth deal, this would not be as wide-ranging as inclusive as it is. Furthermore, both Scottish and UK governments for putting their trust and faith in Falkirk Council to deliver on their financial commitment of ninety million of investment into an area of which is of such national importance. There's been a huge amount of work gone into developing the project offering. That has now been agreed to ensure that it is relevant and deliverable from twenty or so projects. And that has gone through a robust in testing and scrutiny down to what is contained from the original bid that went to government. The growth deal is huge and a welcome contribution as part of our wider investment zone. Suite of projects that we have detailed before us and agreed with government are only part of our aspiration. The original bid, as Douglas has said, was for two hundred and thirty-five million. Work will continue on the other aspects of the investment zone, much of which are related around infrastructure, which is not just significant to us locally, but nationally, and therefore requires the support of national government. Grangemouth is recognised by both UK and Scottish government as part of national infrastructure, and that's been reflected in the creation of the Grangemouth Future Industries Board, to work collaboratively with local authorities, Scottish government, including our local communities, and how large infrastructure projects such as the Grangemouth flood protection scheme, low carbon and conventional infrastructure, such as changes around the port, can be delivered, recognising that level of investments that are required are well beyond that the council can deliver on, and the benefits will be UK-wide, perhaps even further internationally. Growth deal funding is investment over ten years, with our investment zone expected to run over a longer lifespan of fifteen years plus. The uniqueness of Falkirk's strategic location has been recognised, and we've been allowed to develop this deal as a single authority, where others have been done in collaboration with other local authorities. Furthermore, our deal has been based on the partnership of public, private and academia, with shared goals, visions and investment that can be demonstrated within the projects before us. What it aims to deliver is transformational, inclusive and sustainable economic growth, with a focus on creating that just transition, a channel shift that will help us to progress to net zero and meet our local ambitious target of twenty thirty and contribute to the national target of twenty forty-five. We want, we want to see us locally at the forefront of developing new technologies that will support the development and application of low-carbon technologies, utilising carbon dioxide, as well as links to hydrogen development and carbon capture and utilisation. We want to see, using then recycle and reuse, the ethos of the bioeconomy that's already begun to be developed locally, with Calachem, Celtic Renewals, to name but two, repurposing industrial sites as demonstrators, pilots for developing new technologies that can be then sold on and replicated worldwide. We are the home of Alexander Dennis, who are significantly investing in decarbonising public transport by investing in our research and development centre of excellence and manufacturing that will create real opportunities for the young people, green jobs and a skilled workforce with retaining opportunities will be able to be developed and supported through Innovation and Skills Centre, working with Forth Valley College and developing the workforce for the future. This will be critical to being able to facilitate that just transition, learning the lessons of the past, ensuring that you take people and communities with you on that journey, and ensuring that their needs are met through sustainable inclusive growth for the future. Many will remember the demise of the big manufacturing industries of the past, coal mining, steel manufacturing, and how that decimated communities and plunged families to poverty. We cannot allow that to happen again. Therefore, seeing the Great Place's investment in Grangemouth is critical, not just in regenerating the town, but an investment in and for the community. And again, you can be leading that transformation with Grangemouth as a demonstrator for place-based investment. We know that we need to encourage more people out of cars and onto public transport, but public transport has to be affordable and sustainable. A transport hub in Falkirk, multimodal hub in the centre of Falkirk, will help create a focal point to move people around, and the council creation of green agenda, of green corridors between the towns will support the regeneration of Falkirk and Grangemouth town centres, as well as our smaller centres, creating that greener mobility between and to other smaller centres of population. There's a recognition by both UK and Scottish government that people's shopping habits have changed, and there's a real need to look at culture-led regeneration for our town centres. That is reflected in the growth deal, where there's a contribution towards the provision of the arch centre. And more critically, it reflects the forty-five million of the council's matched investment. How this will be delivered has still to be resolved, and will need to be agreed with governments as these detailed business cases are worked up. Falkirk has become very much a visitor destination, and we have the natural assets of the canal. Our partners in Scottish canals have already made investment and are moving their HQ to Falkirk, and will seek to develop Scotland's Canal Centre, offering another unique experience for local people and visitors alike. Part of our shared economic strategy is to continue to develop and enhance our outdoor spaces, create links, and therefore Scotland's outdoor art park, along with the canal corridor, will be a welcome addition. The package of forty million from both each, from both Scottish and UK governments, along with ten million from Scottish government's green fund, forty-five million from Falkirk Council and five million from Scottish canals, gives a total package of around a hundred and forty-one million total investment. With the addition of further commitments of private investment of upwards of a billion, it has a potential to deliver two thousand jobs, many of those which will be green jobs, and a GVA growth of eight hundred and eighty million. This could be further enhanced, but the work that is going through the G-Fib and indeed secondary growth for those businesses downstream, as well as the regeneration of Falkirk and Grangemouth town centres, improving the health and wellbeing of those who work and live within the district. This investment should be seen as a beginning of a journey, and will have the prospect of stimulating further investments along the road. It provides a huge boost locally at a critical time when things have been so challenging due to the economic and human impacts of the pandemic. due to the economic and human impacts of the pandemic, exit from the EU and the escalating impacts of climate change. It does however, give us an opportunity to redress, recover and create a future that is cleaner, greener and much more sustainable, both environmentally and financially. It'll make Falkirk District the place to be, not just to live, but to work and to visit. I would therefore move the recommendations to council that we agree to take forward the signing of the heads of terms and and into partnership with Scottish and UK governments. Thank you, Provost.
Hey, thank you very much. Eh, have you got a second there? Councillor Garner?
Thank you, Provost. Eh, I will, I'm happy to second this in councillor Alexander's absence. It would have been his role today, but unfortunately he's in the hospital. Eh, I would like to echo what the the council leader said and I'd like to thank all of the teams involved in this. I know they've worked tirelessly eh, in the past months and and years in some cases. But yes, Provost, I won't cover anything as Mr Duff and and the council leader always do that eh, very fully. So happy to to second this report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your input. I'll go to councillor Bissett, councillor Bissett. Any amendments at this stage?
Provost, no, we don't, we don't have any amendment, I'd just like to make some observations. Eh, first of all, I'd just like to wish councillor Alexander a speedy recovery. Eh, and and I'd like to congratulate the officers for the sterling work they've done on this project. It's been a long time coming and there's been an awful lot of hours spent on it. And to see these projects coming forward is quite um, heartening and we just need to make sure we deliver them. Eh, so the creation of two thousand jobs, eight hundred eh, eight hundred and forty million, eight hundred and eighty million and gross added value to the area is welcome. I think it's significant, it's empowering, it's it's bringing about a lot of change to the area. And I think that everybody, I don't think there's any councillor here who'd speak against this, I think it's fantastic. And we just need to ensure it's delivered and we deliver the jobs. I think in the past we've heard, you know, things coming forward and they don't come to fruition, but I think we've really got to push and bring this forward. Eh, I I do have some questions, Provost, I won't ask them all, but I'll reserve the right to come back in later on. Eh, one was around the the HQ. Does, does this agreement here in any way jeopardise the decision that was taken eh, at the council to build on the current site? And I'll direct that to Mr Duff and then I've got some other questions. Thank you.
Mr Duff, if you want to respond?
Thanks, Provost. Eh, just to say, it doesn't jeopardise that decision, clearly there's further work to take place following that decision and we have that work underway just now. And also we need to prepare a detailed business case for the UK and Scottish governments in relation to the six million that we've asked for to support the delivery of that project. So further work to take place on this and that would be eh, the basis by which a decision would be made on how that, those funds can come forward. Clearly, that would then inform the council as to how it wants to proceed with the HQ and art centre project.
Okay, and it's really good to see the the UK and the Scottish government working together eh, for the benefit of the the folk, people of Falkirk. And I hope that in the future we can do more of this. Initially, it was two hundred and thirty five million we asked for and we got ninety million. And I know that there's work being done to try and progress these other projects. Eh, so so just touching on the ten projects, how were these decided on? I I certainly never had any sight of them. We we saw the initial projects that came to the executive, but we didn't have, we weren't involved in the re-prioritization, re-prioritisation of these projects. So I just wonder how that was done, given that, you know, the best value report talks about collaboration and eh, cooperation and consensus and scrutiny. So I just wonder how how these were evaluated and by whom?
Good question. You, who wants to come back in this? Mr Duff, do you want to come back in on this one?
I'll, I'll come back on that, Provost. Yeah, so the work that was undertaken eh, to prioritise the package followed the submission that had been made in October twenty nineteen. And it took the criteria that UK and Scottish government would apply to determine those projects that we're willing to fund. And our partners have a subgroup that supports the development of this package and they took the criteria and assessed each of their various submissions. And those projects that are in the package are those that figured most prominently in that list. I should say that the work stream relating to infrastructure was set aside. So we've not forgotten about that package of works, we're continuing to discuss that through the Grange Mouth Future Industry Boards. We think that the Port of Grange Mouth and the Chemicals Complex and so on needs to be better served with infrastructure to meet the net zero challenge. And that work is taking place through that eh, that group, the G-Fib group. So we'll be hoping to bring those projects back once there's clarity in how they proceed. But in terms of prioritising the package, that was done by the partnership cognisant of the decisions that UK and Scottish government would apply to offer their support to the deal.
I I think that the projects are probably been re-prioritised correctly because they do provide a green recovery. Eh, if you, if you study the projects, you can see that, and it's just a case of, as you've said before, Mr Duff, developing the busi- the business cases moving forward and then engaging with communities. It could be said that should be known of engaged communities earlier, but I think your response to me was that we'll have quite worked up the business cases, so it'd be kind of premature. But I hope in the future that we can engage eh, engage the communities. I I'd just like to ask a question around projects, this is at paragraph thirty seven in the appendix. Projects are locally led and owned with Falkirk Council being accountable for the financial management of the deal and responsible for any liabilities incurred in the delivery of the growth deal. So what are the liabilities likely to be and who will they be budgeted for and will there be any impact on our revenue budget?
Again, through you, Provost. And we're not expecting any significant impact on the council's capital or revenue budget. We've tried to keep that clear in the eh, development of this package. We've got the forty five million of match funded contribution to it and it's been mainly the the work of our officers in their substantive positions who've helped to progress this. There is some funding in the economic recovery budget that's lined up to use to support the the development of business cases that will help to progress this. But in overall terms, the governance of this matches the approach that we have with the Falkirk TIF. So the council will be the accountable body, we'll draw down the funds and we'll be responsible for managing the projects. But we will only commission them in compliance with the council's eh, own standing orders and arrangements for procurement. So we will follow the normal process of developing those business cases, following all the proper stages of procurement so that we contain any financial or other risks that would be evident to the council through that process. Eh, and so there will be a series of stages where risk can be understood and mitigated in order to avoid any significant liabilities coming to the council. And that's consistent with the approach that we have on our main programme and also on the likes of the TIF. Eh, and there'll be a dedicated project team that will have responsibility for carrying that forward.
And and can I just ask, eh, we already have a PMO, Project Management Office eh, under Council of the Future. So what's the that, the significant difference between the Invest Falkirk eh, PMO and the Council of the Future PMO?
So this team is being set up consistent with the agreement in the Chief Executives' report back in March of this year, which agreed to set up place services and to create a dedicated Invest Falkirk division. So it's going to restructure some of the services we currently have in development services and put some of the officers eh, on a dedicated basis into those teams. And they will be able then to take forward the various projects. And those officers will have skills in engineering, surveying, planning, architecture, those kind of disciplines. They're not eh, the the kind of business change agents that we have with the PMO for Council of the Future. Eh, these are principally technical and professional skills that are necessary for capital infrastructure and asset works. Eh, and so they will work very closely with the Council of the Future team in terms of reporting the progress of their work. This is a a main priority project of the Council of the Future programme. But they do need to have that dedicated capacity to deliver projects. We'll probably also draw in support from partners, so people like Scottish Enterprise are already speaking about the potential that they could second in some support to allow their projects to proceed so that we get a a shared effort. And it also connects with our work on community engagement, financial management and monitoring. We'll need an an overall capacity around all of that and there'll be a business case to support it.
Thanks very much. I'd just, just like to conclude eh, for the moment and reserve right to come back in eh, that we more than welcome this eh, significant investment and this economic eh, green recovery to the area. It's a fantastic opportunity and I hope we can deliver it. And the 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 council slogan is make it happen, so I hope indeed we do make it happen. And then just to say that we do agree to the recommendations. Thank you for the minute.
Eh, thank you for your input, councillor Bissett. Councillor Carroll, come straight to you.
Eh, thanks, Provost. Eh, like the previous speaker, I'd just like to thank eh, the officers who have worked on this for many years. Eh, this is an important part of the council's history. Eh, the two thousand jobs that has been stated that it could bring eh, will allow people from all over Falkirk District to achieve eh, employment. As, as the leader of the council stated, Falkirk District has previously been an area that was a place for heavy industry. People know the amount of foundries that was in Falkirk. Eh, the pats in the surrounding areas and the manufacturing eh, facilities. Falkirk was renowned for these eh, but they've long since gone and with investment, we hope we will be a council that has and will move forward by the times. The different areas that Mr Duff mentioned, the net zero tech cluster, strategic innovation sites, carbon dioxide eh, centre, Scottish canals, new centre. And what we are partners in the Falkirk College, Alexander Dennis, Ineos, Scottish canals, Fortport. There's a key thing why I think the both governments came forward eh, to support us as a council that we work well with our partners to deliver. Eh, and as councillor Bissett says, I hope that we can deliver on all these eh, different projects. I've councillor Bissett covered a couple of questions I had, but I have just some eh, smaller questions to ask if if possible.
Carry on.
With regards to the 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 project team, Mr Duff kind of touched on it, but will these be, because of the new place structure, will they be new employees or will they be taken from inside the place structure as as it will be?
Through you, Provost?
Yep.
It'd probably be both councillor. Eh, we'll probably accommodate some of our existing staff and look to recruit more staff to support project delivery. Eh, we'd anticipate that within the makeup of the business cases for these projects, we'll anticipate what the staff requirement will be for their delivery and look to charge that against the project. It's not settled absolutely that that's the way it can be done. Eh, they may look for us to engage external consultants, that kind of thing, but I think we feel that it's important that we involve our own team, minimise the use of external consultants, build our own expertise in this area of work and have a blend of disciplines across engineering, architecture, surveying, planning, project management that will allow the the projects to be delivered. So the the idea is that it will be a blended team of internal, external, some permanent, some temporary staff that will meet the needs of the programme as it evolves.
Eh, thank you, Mr Duff. Eh, the next question is councillor Bissett kind of touched on it, the liability hack. Saying that we will, we will be liable for the projects. What kind of thing would be, would we be liable for?
Well, again, through you, Provost. Eh, that will be down to sign off on the delivery of the agreed projects. So at this point in time, all we have is heads of terms based on outline cases for the projects that allows us to take it to the next stage to prepare detailed business cases. And that will be the basis of sign off for delivery of the funding. But in the course of that, we're going to have to settle on affordability. Can we afford to to deliver them all? And know that that can be contained within budget and we'll have different risk assessments and so on to support that. Eh, there will always be arrangements with government to settle on the level of allocation that can be made and the expectations, they'll have to make sure that the projects are delivered. But eh, as we've had with the TIF, we have arrangements in place for liaison with government to make sure that we've got sufficient funds for delivery and before we commit to delivering a contract, that we're clear that that's settled and the the risks are properly dealt with.
Eh, thank you, Mark. My last question, eh, Provost eh, as everybody understands, this is signing the the heads of term is only the start. And there's a, a lot of work to be done after this eh, process. And will we get future updates on when these progress, these projects progress? I think that will be key for to bring, whether it's new councillors or no, but to bring them on board to for the support. I think getting the communication right will be key to this.
Again, through you, Provost. Eh, I would expect that we would do that consistent with the approaches that we have in other programmes like the TIF. So on the TIF, we do an annual report, we point to any changes in approach or decisions that are needed and seek agreement for those through the executive. So I would be expecting a series of reports coming up, certainly annual reports, perhaps some more often depending on the specific projects being taken forward for decision to allow these to proceed. So I would expect that coming from this, there will be a regular series of reports coming to eh, to executive for decision.
Thank you very much. Eh, thank you, Provost.
Okay, thank you. Before I bring councillor McLoughie in, I'd just like to say a couple of words myself. I'd be asked a couple of questions to Mr Duff. Now, obviously, we eh, we, there's some councillors that represent other areas and no Grange Mouth. This is a wonderful and exciting project eh, for for the whole of that area. But you can imagine that some of our constituents have been coming and saying, well, we never get anything here. We've been looking at the the west for regeneration. You stated in your summary that there'd be further in, the further investment. Councillor Care touched on the fact about the the loss of jobs due to the demise of the heavy industry. Well, Bonnybridge, you've got Bonnybridge Banking Open, you've got all the Denny area, but Bonnybridge alone eh, lost seven thousand jobs up until the nineteen eighties. And the fact is that we've been desperate in that area for eh, for regeneration. But what I'm asking you is that you stated there'd be further investment, is there opportunities? The first question is, will there be opportunities for further investment zones in all the areas of Falkirk District over the 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 course of the the next few years? But speaking directly on this paper, eh, one area that you mentioned, and I think the leader had mentioned as well, was eh, was public transport. But I don't see anything in here on the area of the the But I don't see anything in here on the area of the proposal for over for many years to reopen up the Grainsmouth railway station. Plus, you know that we are supporting the reopening of the Bonnybush railway station and it's at a stag appraisal at the moment. The other area, Mr Duff, is the fact is that I was lucky to be on Sestrand a number of years ago. And one of the areas in terms of the investment zone that they kept hammering out was the fact that there was a wonderful opportunity in Grainsmouth to deepen the water there to ensure that bigger ships and that could come in. So my three questions are, the further investment, is there going to be opportunities for these investment zone in all our areas in the next few years? And also in terms of public transport, what's the position, because I don't see it mentioned in any of the papers in relation to the opening the Grainsmouth, because we're talking about getting all the, you're talking about getting all the cars and the lorries off the roads using public transport. Well, the fact is you've got a wonderful opportunity during this investment zone to get that railway station reopened. And also, what is the situation with the deep water? Because that would be a tremendous value to that area. Other than that, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for the area. Thank you.
Thanks Provost. Happy to pick up on those questions. In terms of other areas, I think important to pick up on the point that Mr Laurie made earlier in his introduction about the pattern of these city and growth deals across the country. We've been able to bring forward this deal on our own, largely down to the fact that we've got Grainsmouth on our area, that it's a nationally significant priority location. And we've been able to work up this package cognizant of what's coming forward at Grainsmouth. I think had we been looking for a more generic package across the area, then we may have been drawn into deals with Sterling or over with the Larnychers or with Edinburgh and the Lothians. And we have been able to pursue this on our own, focus on Grainsmouth, but we have said we want to be treated as an investment zone, so we want to attract other investments that will support our economic growth. And we will continue to make the case for opportunities in other areas. You're probably familiar, we made the case for support for the slip roads at Bank Knock that will support the development coming off the M80 and we've been successful in getting some funding towards the contributions there. And we'll continue to make the case for that kind of investment that will help the area overall. And in relation to the railway stations, you're right. The prospect of new rail hulks at Grainsmouth and at Bonnybridge have been looked at for some considerable time and there is that work underway on the stag appraisal for Bonnybridge. It takes time, as you're obviously very familiar with, to go through the various hurdles on that. But I think the direction of travel that we have, no pun intended, is very much towards net zero and it's about encouraging people to get out their cars and use public transport more often. And so we will be looking to maximise the capacity of the rail network in our area, look at what we can do if there is more possibility for rail hulks that can be delivered. We've not said specifically in this, a new Grainsmouth rail halt would come through this package. But it's something we would want to look at in the course of this. And in the course of doing that, then absolutely you would consider if Bonnybridge is also a possibility. So it's in no sense ruled out, but it would just need to look to other sources of investment to allow it to proceed. In relation to the port, and you're right, there is the potential to increase the the depth of the access into the port that would accommodate larger ships. It's something we're smoking with for some considerable time with Fort Port who own the Grainsmouth docks. We are speaking to them just now about the flood defence scheme and the potential for additional works at the dock entry to allow the flood prevention, the infrastructure to be put in place. And the port do have an aspiration to deepen the dock. That was one of the projects we looked at very early days in this, but wasn't able to proceed. Fort Port weren't ready to proceed with it and also it's got a significant capital cost. You're basically having to close the dock for a considerable period to deepen it by several, a couple of metres, I think it is. And so it is a very technical and challenging project with a significant cost associated with it. So we've not gone so far with this, but it is certainly something again we're keeping our minds eye to.
Thank you very much. I'm very, very pleased with what you had stated there, Mr Duff. Councillor McLoughie then, Councillor Munro.
Thanks Provost for allowing me in and thanks for your calendar. I got it today. I'm showing the areas round Falkirk, so thank you very much Provost. And I agree with the speaker so far. It's an excellent report, as I say, it's tremendous and like to congratulate the officers and obviously the UK government for their contribution. And I even have to acknowledge other government, but for their money into this project. And as I say, it's all beneficial, all brilliant. And, you know, it's great to get reports like this to show the future investment where this can go. But Douglas is following on for a question. I've no written down because if I wrote notes down, I would forget where I put them, so I just didn't do that. But it's on the investment in the canals now. We have got these partner groups who have worked with us to come up with all this interesting work. But what I do see here is £4 million for the canal centre at Lock 16 and £3 million for the art part. But years ago, when the push came up before the Kelpies were built, there was a priority by Scottish Canals to develop the full canal, go right up. Now, there's a lot of interest in communities here and we're going to another council area further up. And even in the past, we talked about a possible Marina or turning point, you know, and even if they need something further or even right up at the top, another council area. But in the last 15 years, I've no heard any progress or any development. So it's sad that the canals are focusing still on what is existing. And I know me and Councillor Blackwood many years ago went on the boat and we went away up there and beautiful countryside, never enough there. What assets and what things could be developed further up that canal? And moan ward, the lower braze and upper braze and as I say, the other council area. So could, is there a possibility of, you know, it's the fact that we haven't heard nothing. And it was good that you get as a verbal saying that talks are still ongoing with Scottish canals. But could we maybe get a memo or something next year to show that these discussions about taking that part of the canal forward is progressing? Because it seems 15 years is a long time for nothing to happen. And I know that you told me you're working on it and that's, and the Scottish canals, you're still going to priority. But the fact that it's not in any of the two proposals here means it's not as a priority as these two. And I think that for my areas, who have people who do present and, you know, developing that canal full link, that, you know, it would be good that some potential bids or or work could be done. So we're just asking for clarification at the meeting now so that it can be obviously put down that this has been asked for and get your response please.
Douglas.
Yep, through you Provost. Yeah, so it's certainly something we continue to have dialogue with Scottish canals about. And the Marina proposal that was put before failed principally through the economic downturn and the significant upfront costs. And having to be mitigated to enable that to proceed. So I know it's certainly something that Scottish canals are certain to be happening. But the quid pro quo to enable its delivery is a challenge. And I think importantly for this deal wasn't seen as something that could come through this mechanism, given its focus on national economic growth. So it's something that will need to come through other streams. But I'm certainly happy to raise that point with our colleagues at Scottish canals and see if there's any further update and how they see it coming forward.
Just to supplement that, the deal that brought the canal upgraded all the way up to, obviously, the Helix was a national deal, was it no then, to deliver that? I know what I'm seeing is, why does a national deal stop at the Helix and no the full canal? Does that know the purpose of your canal to go from A to B, no, or no to B halfway to A?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the deal for the Helix was based on the Living Landmarks funds that came from the big lottery fund. So that was a bid that we were successful with back at the time that submission was made.
Okay, thank you for your input, Councillor McLoughie. It's Councillor Munro, Councillor Bowes, and I think Councillor Spearsity signed up. Councillor Munro, thank you.
Thank you Provost for your indulgence. I think we we all want to be positive about the prospects of this additional cash and additional funding and jobs for the communities of Falkirk District. But realistically, this is only nine million a year or 90 million over 10 years. It sounds very glossy. And yet we're committing to a 10-year plan on economic development for the whole area. And as Cecil said, there are areas of the council which relied under progress on the pits and the former ports, potteries and timber yards which have gone. My own community is one of these, Bowness. Where is the reassurance these communities such as Bowness and neglect, other neglected areas such as the braze, Bonnybridge, et cetera? Does this mean other areas will continue to be starved of economic funding? Because my own area really struggles. We have numerous plans put forward which were helped with by co-board regeneration, which have been ignored by council. This project has been worked on since 2015. So why is it, a member of the administration said it was the first time he'd heard about it at last week's briefing. Why is this? If it's pivotal to the council, how does it fit with our current projects and community planning? In the report under five two, it states a robust process of community engagement will be required for the successful delivery of this programme. This will be developed as resources come forward, the developments and delivery of each project. Early stage work will be required to involve each community and this will be connected with council's work on empowering communities. Saying, and I believe it says in thirty five that we have consulted and engaged extensively to develop proposals. But that's not the case because we've heard very little about this. And what is being suggested is we've got 10 reports or 10 projects and we're going to tell communities what they're getting. As a member of the Council of the Future, where projects are put forward for scrutiny, I've liked my colleagues in the SNP who sits on this group, never seen or had an opportunity to discuss these various projects. In a few weeks, we'll have a new director of place who with future councillors and officers will have to implement the plans. So again, we're kind of rushing through the process and we've been given a glossy presentation without any real facts or benefits when just one week ago, this council was been asked to sharpen up its act and to ensure that people had the necessary facts and figures to make the necessary decisions. So I would like to ask a couple of questions that came out of some of the things that have been said all right already. What's the likely cost of this specialist team with engineers, et cetera? I was under the impression, we're supposed to be one council and this isn't in the spirit of working across council. So perhaps Douglas, you could tell me why you have to have a separate team out with PMO?
Douglas, first question.
Provost, I think I've answered that question earlier in a response to Councillor Bisset when I explained that this team is going to be needed for professional and technical work for the delivery of capital infrastructure works. It's not a programme change team as we have internally within the council. This is about external works that need to be commissioned that will build on the reprints that we have within development services as we change to place services. Through the council's decision in March this year, there will be an Invest Falkirk team put in place. And that will be a blend of internal and external staff. And that work has to be put underway at the next stage. Once we know that these funds will come forward, we will recruit the team that we need to deliver them. So that work needs to take place now. It's not work that's been done so far. It would be premature to do so without the knowledge that the funds are going to be there. So we have built this very carefully. As I say, it goes back to our early economic strategy in 2015. We've been through a robust process with our partners and a number of members took part in the recent meeting of the Economic Partnership that had a range of those players around the table. UK and Scottish government have been witness to the contributions coming from the various partners towards the delivery of this. They are very supportive of the package that's been put forward. They see this as integral to their own plans. And it helps to move the area's economy forward. And importantly for the UK and Scottish government, it helps to move the nation's economy forward. So we are seen as this making a very real and tangible contribution to the nation's economy. So I would say that, you know, we've very properly and carefully considered how this project, the package of projects can fit and align with the rest of the work that we have underway. We need the proper skills in place to deliver it. We're mitigating any risks to the council, particularly financially in terms of how it can run. And it is intended to create real benefits for all of our communities, not solely those targeted with individual projects. There will be further measures to support that.
So we're embarking on projects for which we don't currently have the skills and therefore we're going to have to go into the employment market and employ at vast costs a number of new people, but for which we still don't have any costs.
Provost, again through you, I think I answered that question earlier when I said about the Invest Falkirk team and having the necessary skills to deliver these projects. We will grow that team according to the demand that the projects present. What we are keen to do is to grow that capacity internally, not to commission repeated teams of private consultants to do this work, but to have our own in-house capacity to do that. It's more cost effective to have that arrangement in place. But we need to grow that carefully to make sure that it's well matched to the pace of delivery of the projects that we have identified. So we will always be cognisant of cost and of the benefits that are to be obtained from this. And we'll use the process of getting the business cases, of getting the Invest Falkirk team together staged according to the scale of demand and certainly not wasteful a resource.
Next question one.
Did we have a capital bid for the investment zone?
Douglas.
No, because we're asking UK and Scottish government for it and we've sought to mitigate any further contributions. We would be happy to put forward a case for further investment to support the various projects that are here. But we recognise the pressures that the council experiences on its capital programme. For that reason, the existing commitment that's there towards each good art centre is seen as our match funding contribution. But we've made no additional bids to the programme for this programme's delivery. is seen as our match funding contribution, but we've made no additional bids to the programme for this programme's delivery.
By, by doing it in, in this way, it, it hasn't allowed for discussion and scrutiny, which might have been helpful. And given that we're talking of ninety million and ten projects over the ten year period, do you envisage that there are other, as yet unforeseen costs that will accrue to the council over this project other than the ones you've talked about in terms of your and, and employment of additional staff?
Douglas.
Again, through you Provost, I, I don't envisage additional costs at this point. We need to do the work on the business cases for these projects. So that will come at the next stage. And I think I mentioned at the outset that in all of our work, we have been emphasising that this package is contributing towards the nation's economic growth. And therefore we're looking that UK and Scottish government would share in the commitment towards its delivery. And would recognise that if there is pressure on added cost to it, then they would have a responsibility in helping to, to meet that cost and not solely the council. But that's down to this further stage of work that's needed.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, thank you Provost.
Hey, thank you for your scrutiny there. It's now councillor Bowes. Thank you Gary.
Thank, thank you Provost. Can I join the, the, the people who thanked Douglas and, and all the people? I think he, he quite rightly says that, that, that many people who did all the work Douglas gets the privilege of presenting. And I think it was, was his comment to me. But, but to do all this work for this and then work with Scottish government and Westminster government and particular civil service must have been quite tasking over the, over the past good few years. Can I welcome over a billion pounds worth of business investment? Eight hundred and eighty million a growth value added. So as it grows, we'll be more, more towards a hundred and forty one million pounds of investment to, sorry, sorry, somebody's calling me. I don't know if yous can hear that. Sorry, excuse me. Right, sorry, somebody was calling me if you heard any, any beeping there. That, that's coming to, to basically two billion pounds worth of investment in our, in our area. But there's one particular part I want to focus on. And I, and I hear people saying about what will my area get? Well, well, Caskin, Erdin Triest. And then I'm resident in Larborough. And the one thing they'll get is the two thousand jobs. The people from my area will be able to go, go and take some of these jobs hopefully. The increase in the improvement in education. And, and the other point, and probably one of the most important points, is the actual public transport net zero clusters. And which is, if you look at it, the, the, the input of ten million pounds to our area is, is, is an excellent amount, amount and potential for, for jobs and work. Plus once you invest ten million, who knows what, who else comes in and does it? I've got to say this is one of the best reports I've ever seen in my, my meager four and a half years in council. And I thank you Douglas and your team for that. Thank you.
Thanks for your positive input there councillor Bowes, councillor Spears, and then we'll go back to the leader. Councillor Spears.
Okay, thank you Provost. I'd, I'd like to join in the praise to the, the team that's put this together. It's fantastic. As a local member in Grange Mouth, it gives us our dignity back. It gives us hope. And it also gives a future for the next generation. I was very pleased to hear Douglas speaking about chips, about job opportunities. Now, the vast majority of people that work in Grange Mouth at the moment don't live in Grange Mouth. They live in the Braze, Larborough, Denny, Bowness. And the, the benefits of employment locally in Grange Mouth is spread out throughout the district. I know that a, a, as an ex-employee down in Grange Mouth, a lot of people then go on and work abroad and bring a lot of financial benefits back abroad. And we have the hub and the excellence for, for training in that field, not just locally, but right spread across the world. And it also gives the chance and the opportunity to the next generation. And surely that's what we're about, providing the opportunities for the next generation. And yes, they all have lovely quiet places to stay without any pollution, maybe in Bonny Bridge, maybe in Bowness, maybe up the Braze or Denny. And we've got to see this as the way forward. As an older generation ourselves, we've got to see that we are providing a stepping stone, a future for the next generation. So I support it as a local member, all part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input councillor Spears. And we're going to go back to the leader because there've been no, but I believe there's a couple of people, councillor Balfour, want to in.
Yeah, thanks Provost. Yeah, just to echo what councillor Spears said there. As a local member as well in Grange Mouth, it's a fantastic report. It's a very positive report. And it gives us a, an amazing opportunity to put Grange Mouth on the map. And for once, for the right reasons. So thoroughly welcome the report. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. Councillor Black, did you want in?
No, I would just be repeating what my other two local elected members said. It's like I'm very pleased with the, with the, with the report. And I think that we've got a lot to be optimistic about for the future.
Okay, thanks for, for all your inputs here. We'll go back to the leader now. Councillor Michael, John.
Thank you Provost. This is a huge opportunity for a council area. And I fully appreciate that there's parts of the district that don't necessarily see the direct investment because there's not a project in their area. But as, as my colleagues have said, there's a cascade effect and there'll be a number of strategic sites, some, some of which will be out with Grange Mouth. And, and that will have a boost to the, the local economy. But the prospect of two thousand jobs, and these two thousand jobs can come from all over the district and are likely to come from all over the district, particularly as we're going to be targeting opportunities for our young people. And, and that is a legacy for the future that we want to create. And because we need to create that workforce for the future. And those young people will go on to be the advocates and right across the country. And so I'm pleased that there's unanimity across the council. And by the majority of those being very positive and seeing the prospects for the future and understanding the strategic nature of, of this investment and the work that is then required to be done to develop those detailed business cases. And, and we need to remember that while the council will be the accountable body and overseeing body, a lot of the work will be done with and in collaboration with our partners and who again have the ability to influence and, and drive forward aspects around the net zero as well as in creation of jobs going forward. And we, we also need to understand how growth deals work. And obviously having, having listened today, that there's, there's some people that don't actually have, haven't really understood how growth deals work despite the various reports that we've had before us. And so I think it's important that they take time to do that and work within the criteria that we are given by government for the growth deal. But if we can get this right and actually deliver on, on those projects, government will have more confidence to, to enabling funding, funding elsewhere that will be able to create investment further for our area and within the, the district. A lot of hard work has gone into securing this deal and it will help us deliver on our council priorities. One of our key council priorities is around that, getting to that net zero and an economic regeneration and sustainability. And indeed transform our council for the future. And so I'm very pleased that we were able to take this forward and be able to go to tomorrow's signing of the heads of terms and start to move to the next phase of our growth deal and hope that members will continue to support that going forward. Thank you Provost.
Thank you. So has everybody agreed to the recommendation contained within the report? We're all agreed?
Agreed, agreed, agreed.
That just gives me the opportunity to wish you and your family, friends and neighbours a wonderful festive period. And the main thing during this is to remember and keep safe. And we'll see you on, on the next meeting. Just to tell you about the next meeting of the council, the date.
Nineteenth of January?
Nineteenth of January. So have a great time everybody, but stay, stay safe. Thank you.